I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please let me get this. Okay, can you hear me? Everybody in the back hears me? Okay. I usually like to try and recognize briefly just some folks in the evening. I want to take a moment to recognize two people who aren't here tonight with us. Steve Prizzle and Sterling Whiting, two town officials of long standing who passed away this last year and can't be with us this evening. They spent many, many years in public service for our community. Steve on the Board of Selectmen and Sterling on the Planning Board. And Sterling also donated our Christmas tree for our memory tree each year. I'd like to ask you to take a moment, just to pause and reflect on their service to the community. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the service of some people who have also given many, many years of service and who are with us, still with us. Sally Kasper and Sylvia Daley. Sally is not at the meeting tonight, but Sylvia is here with us. She's given 20 years of service to the community and is retired this year. Sylvia, thank you very much for your many years of service. I'm going to just take a moment to remind everybody about the rules of our town meeting. First of all, please turn off your cell phones if you have them. Put them away in your pocket. I'm attempting to play them. I want to make sure there's no interruptions during this evening. If it gets too noisy with the fans on, we're trying to keep the air moving because it's a bit muggy tonight from the thunderstorm. We cleared some of the emitting away, but if it gets to be a problem, let us know. We will shut off the fans. And we're just trying to keep the temperature comfortable for people. I want to remind you that when it comes time to discuss the articles, please stress your comments to me as the moderator. We talk about the ideas of the board. We don't talk about the people involved. We don't discuss personalities. We discuss ideas. We will read the articles. We'll have a second. The proponent of the article will then discuss or explain what the article is about, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions on the article. Everyone gets at least one question before we get seconds. So one bite of the apple, and then we work our way around. If someone has a second question, we'll go on to that second question. I think that that's it. Everyone's pretty much used to those rules. I think we'll get started then. Usually the Finance Committee begins. I do want to try to move things along at the beginning. We have six housekeeping articles. Article one, Article two, three, four, five, and six are articles that are just standard housekeeping items. Article one recognizes the election results. Article two is recognizing reports. Article three allows members of boards to serve as their board clerks. Article four allows the selectmen to apply for grants where it doesn't require additional town funds. Article five and six allows the treasurer with approval of the selectmen to borrow in anticipation of revenue or to borrow in anticipation of Chapter 90 reversed. Because they say these are housekeeping articles, I'm wondering if we could just treat these as a consensus item, meaning we would just pass them all at once. They generally go through without any questions. There's a strong feeling one way or the other about doing that. It's typically a consensus item. Dave, are you making a motion to pass these as a consensus item?
I have a question.
Okay, then we won't take it as a consensus item. So then we'll go back to Article one. First, I'll ask for a motion.
I move Article one as written.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, we've moved the second and taken Article one as written. Any discussion on Article one? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article one as written, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Pass unanimously. Article two, is there a motion on Article two?
No. To... Article two as written, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Second. Move the second to take Article two. Is there any discussion? We're waiting for the printer. Due to COVID, it went originally, it was going to be done by Monty Tech, and then they closed, and then it went to the printer, and then they closed. So it's been a struggle getting it printed. Vote with your pleasure. Any of the board have something special to say in regard to the annual course? Don't see anything, so. When we get to that article, yes. Any other questions? All of us in favor of accepting the article as motion, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article three?
I move Article three as written, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Second. Moved and seconded, adopt Article three as written, deleting the words or relation thereto. Any discussion on Article three? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Adopt unanimously. Article four, for motion.
I'll move Article four as written, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Article four's been moved and seconded. Good question, Mr. Manning. You have a quick wait for the mic.
Is there a grant writer for this? And if there is a grant writer, do they get a percentage of the grant that would be in place?
No, the answer is, is no. There is not a grant writer for this. This is a blanket permission for the selectmen to apply for and receive and expend grants which do not require further appropriation. So the answer is no. Any other questions? Any other questions? All those in favor of the article, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article five, is there a motion?
I move Article five as written, deleting the words or act in relation thereto.
Second. Article five has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article five? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article five, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Article five is adopted unanimously. Is there a motion on Article six?
I move Article six as written, deleting or act in relation thereto.
Article six has been moved and seconded, deleting the words or act in relation thereto. Is there any discussion on Article six? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article six, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Article six is adopted unanimously. Article seven, is there a motion on Article seven?
I move the town set the salary and compensation of all elected town officers as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the General Laws, and add the tax collector to the list at $27,417, and raise and appropriate the total sum of $104,790.
It's been moved and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $104,790, adding the sum of 24... It can't be 27,417 to the amount printed in the board for the tax collect. Deleting the words or act in relation thereto. Yes, ma'am.
What was last year's budget?
Was the last budget budget number? I think you have it in your... In the CHTs there that is going to get out. It's just four pages. You're going, you're going. There you go.
As you will know, the tax collectors added that in because it ended up being an elected position as opposed to appointed because the appointment question failed on the ballot. So we have to add it in once.
So they're putting that line back in. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the article as read, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Article passes. Article eight, general operating officer, do you have a motion?
All right, Mr. Moderator, I would request that you read off the departments in case anybody has any questions.
I will read each of these departments. If there is a question on any of the items, just say aye. We will come back to that item. So you're removing the items as approved. You're removing the whole question as approved. Just say aye if you have a question.
We'll go back to... That's all we've got. All right, so I would like to move that you... I move the article in reading all of the departments.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Agricultural Commission, clerk stipend?
Question.
Expense? Animal Control Stipend?
Question.
Expense? Board of Appeals Clerk Stipend?
Question.
Expense? Board of Assessors Payroll? Expense? Board of Health Payroll? Expense? Board of Selectmen Payroll? Expense? Building Department Payroll? Expense? Cemetery Commission Payroll? Expense? Conservation Commission Clerk Stipend?
Question.
Expense? Dispatch Service Expense? Emergency Management Payroll? Expense? Finance Committee Reserve?
Question.
Expense? Fire Department Payroll? Expense? Highway Department Payroll? Snow and Ice? Expenses?
Question.
Sorry, who is that? Inspector Barnes and Animal Stipend?
Question.
Expense? Library Payroll? Library Expense? Library Circulation? Moderator Expense? Planning Board Expense? Consultant?
Question.
Police Department Payroll? Police Department Expenses? Tax collector Expense?
Question.
Town Account Expense? Town Account Payroll? Town Clerk, Assistant Town Clerk? Election and Town Clerk, Election and Registration? Registration? Town Clerk Expense? Town Clerk Voter Registration?
Question.
Treasurer Payroll?
Question.
Treasurer, Assistant Treasurer Collector?
Question.
Treasurer Expense? Treasurer Root Health Life? Treasurer Medicare? Treasurer Unemployment Compensation? Treasurer Highway Garage Debt? Treasurer Queen Lake Dam Debt? Treasurer Worcester County Retirement? Treasurer WPAT? Treasurer Tax Title Expenses? Tree Warden Payroll? Tree Warden Expense? Veteran Services Administration? Veteran Services Direct Benefits? That was the last one. Okay. Back to the top. Agricultural Commission Clerk Stipend?
I move that we change the title to Clerk Payroll and set that at $365. Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay. We've always, in the past, it was always said payroll, not stipend. And $365 is the amount that was voted last year for that line item.
Animal Control Stipend? So it's a motion to amend from $300 to $365. Is there a second?
A second.
That was also to amend the wording stipend to payroll.
There's a motion to amend the wording to read payroll and to change the amount from $300 to $365. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
I want everybody to remember when we're going through these numbers that we have a really tight budget this year. Kevin has figured in a 5% decrease. Many towns are expecting a 20% decrease. We have a lot of unknowns. We don't know what the state's going to give us. So just take that into consideration when you're ready. These numbers are very tight, and we have to be careful what we're spending.
When you say it's very tight, we're talking within a few thousand dollars. Just so you understand, it's not hundreds of thousands, it's millions of dollars. We're talking within a few thousand dollars. Actually, it's less than a hundred thousand. Go ahead. So are there any other questions about?
I just want to point out to the town folks, the changes you're going to hear from the Finance Committee tonight ends up with around $40,000 in the black. So it's not doom and gloom. The money that we're changing is small amounts. And one time around with this budget, a lot of things were literally cut out. And so the Finance Committee felt that should be put back in. And like I said, folks, I said the black wire on $40,000. I think that's pretty good. You've come a lot closer than that, Matt.
Any other discussion from the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of changing the wording to read clerk payroll and the amount to read $365, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Take majority of that. Animal Control Stipend, $45,43?
Ms. Moderator, I move that to simply say payroll and move the word stipend.
Any discussion? Mr. Manning, wait for the mic, please.
Who is the animal control officer for the sheen? According to the bylaw, the Buddhist doctrine shall annually appoint an animal control officer who shall be sworn in by the tomic law. How much money in that?
Right now, we've been talking to GAF, to combine with PAM, to stick around and save some money, and we don't have the numbers on yet yet. Hope to have them on tomorrow.
I have been the animal patrol officer for Matt Phillipsden for 22 years. I am informed that I may not be getting reappointed as the animal patrol officer, that they want to go out and save money. And you see on my budget, not much money there. Right now, alcohol is charging Royal Stamps $6,100. With them services, you don't get any service. They only do a nine to five. There's no after hours, very little emergency calls. They don't do any dead animals like I have been doing.
When? When?
Very few wild ones.
The issue here is changing the wording. The issue here is not about who's appointed. So stick to the changing of the wording, okay?
Can you tell me if I'm getting appointed or not?
I can't answer that question, and that's not the issue on the floor. The issue on the floor is changing the title from stipend to payroll. So let's stick with that. Any discussion further on changing the word from stipend to payroll? All right, all those in favor of changing the title from stipend to payroll, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Take the ayes, have it. Board of Appeals Clerk Stipend?
I move that the wording from stipend gets changed to payroll and the amount to $789.
Seconded.
And the reasoning for the $1 amount change is as the same amount as what was last year.
Any questions or further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to change the title to payroll from clerk stipend to clerk payroll, change the figure to $789, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Take the ayes, have it. Dropping down to Conservation Commission Clerk Stipend?
Ms. Moderator, I move that we change the wording from stipend to payroll.
Okay. Motion to change the title from clerk stipend to clerk payroll?
Just to get the name changed.
Any discussion on this change? Anything further? All those in favor of changing the word to read clerk payroll, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Take the ayes, have it. Dropping down to Finance Committee Reserve Fund?
Ms. Moderator, I request that we insert a line here and put in the payroll for $788. The reason for the request is that it was amended completely off of the board, and that is the amount that the clerk received last year.
I'm going to hold that that's beyond the scope of payroll. When you prepare the board, leave this, the items that are going to be in the board. And to add another line item in here is to go beyond what the list of things are. If I allow this, then at another point, someone might say, well, I want to add in another line in there for a police crew. We mark either what we're going to add in or what we're going to put in the budget. If I say yes to this, somebody could come in and say, okay, well, I want a police crew to rein here, this and here. And you establish for the president, we'll allow a team to add that. So I'm going to rule, I talked to council, I'm going to rule that this is beyond the scope of opening a board in your area. We're going to move on.
May I just take one moment? All right, even though the select board gave it up.
Sorry? Well, it may be, and you know, we do have another crime, but if we start laying on that road, adding extra lines, it's clear, there's no end. I think that that's, you know, we're all up there. The next one is highway... Yes, Mr. French.
I'd like to hear from town councilmen, as well, as a place.
Drew, you was moderator. I'm responsible for questions. Questions concerning scope are within the moderator's discretion. The moderator makes a determination on all procedural issues in with respect to determining whether or not any amendments is within the scope of the article. Moderator's word, man, is final. So it's really completely up to the moderator to make a determination whether or not he feels that amendment is within the scope of the article. That's what the law is on that issue. That's what the law is on that issue.
Next item was the highway. Rick, you have another question?
On the highway.
Okay, on the highway.
Hi, my name is Rick Tenny. I'm the highway superintendent in Phillipsden. Since I come on, 2014, I level funded the highway at $54,900. Last year, it got rounded down to $54,000. Uh, this year, we, April 15th, we had some descriptions put in our purchase and surplus in goods, uh, for a little bit, and I believe in some ways in the neighborhood of $8,000 or $9,000 in my account with no time to spend it. So I'm asking if the Selectment or the Finance Committee would consider level funding the highway again and add in $5,000 so that I can use the funds that left on the table for repairs to equipment.
Motion made to increase the highway expenses to $56,300. Or any comment from the floor? No, wait a minute, let's get somebody else, Rick.
Oh, that's the wrong number.
Okay, what's the right number?
I have $111,000.
Two?
$25,000.
Two, what was the number?
$111,000.
I requested to consider level funding me again at $54,000 and increasing it $5,000 for the funds that were left on the table.
So what's the final number?
54 and 5 is $59,000, please.
Yeah, you're all over the place. So are you moving to change your budget? Are you making a motion to change your budget?
Yes.
To $59,000?
Yes.
Okay, you're second. We have a motion, we have a really good one. We have a motion on the floor to increase the highway by $59,000. We have discussion.
I thought at the end of the season, when you got done, you got to, like, you might have to turn it in.
Yeah, I figured I could cut the money because of the amount.
I said at the end of the season, we had money left over. Don't you have to turn that into the town and stopage a new budget? So he wants to keep it?
No. No, he wants to increase next year's budget.
Oh, this is for next year?
Yes.
But keep $5,000 of what he's got this year?
No. He's saying that it had money left over at the end of this year.
Yeah.
Earlier this year, we, we froze all the budgets because we were concerned about cash and the current financial situation. Many departments had money left over. Select Board had money left over, his department had money left over. Everyone's budgets were frozen to control for cash. Anyone who wanted to spend money was invited to come to the Select Board and ask us to spend money. Everyone who came and asked was given permission to spend. He came, but then he was asked to come to the Select Board and come talk to me, and he didn't talk.
We'd love to give everybody everything they want. We'd like to do nothing more, but if, if everybody wants more money. So it's really, it's up to the voters if you want to do this, and, uh, something might have to get cut. I know Char says they could put in thousands of figures. I hope so. Because there goes a ten of it. It's up to the voters, whoever you want to spend your money.
I just want to say that, um, we all know that money given to the road department guys is well-spent. This year, the budget was set a little differently than it has in the past, just so that you know. In the past, people would hand in their budget, the Finance Committee would meet with them, they'd have an opportunity to talk about their budget, and the Finance Committee would eventually work it somehow into the spreadsheet. This year, the pandemic, pandemic came along, and that didn't happen. So I'd say just about every department on here that would normally come to the Finance Committee, or at least have an audience, or the opportunity to have an audience, didn't. So I think it's only fair that we listen to the man and give him the money he needs to keep our roads up the way we own.
Any other questions? Are you not, all is in favor of the amendment as stated, $59,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Strike your words, animals.
I move that you strike the word stipend and leave it as payroll.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor of changing the word to payroll, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Lady board, console.
I withdraw my motion.
First up, is the chairman of the lady board here? He said he might not make it because he's helping take care of some of the, just had surgery. But if he's not here, I would speak to it. Um, there's a couple of things that are, um... Oh, well, I'm adding, I can't add one?
I mean, you're welcome to speak if you like, but the whole is, she's the woman for the whole.
Alright, I was just going to talk about the $8 amount. I would, God, it's like...
Next, legislature expense. Court voter registration.
I move we set the voter registration at $250. And the reason behind that is because, uh, state law said that each registrar gets a certain amount, like $50. So to decrease it between below the $250 would be a violation of master law. No, it is not payroll, it's voter registration, $250.
Any other comments? All those in favor of changing to $250, yeah?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Treasurer, treasurer collector payroll.
I move that we set the payroll at $25,772.
Second.
The reasoning for that is because that was the anticipated amount for the payroll when you were going to have both a, it was going to be a combined position of treasurer payroll. So last year, the treasurer payroll's account was the 25,772.
Should the word be changed from treasurer collector payroll to just treasurer payroll?
Okay. Anything else? David, ready for the mic?
Um, actually, it wasn't about this. I was just wondering if we could revisit another question, uh, after the floor is over.
Any other questions about this whole?
I don't know if people are looking at different things, but mine says under treasurer, treasurer collector payroll, $52,000. And, um, the Finance Committee is changing the amount, but the wording on my sheet says treasurer collector payroll, and it should be treasurer payroll. Or just payroll, I don't know how you, how you do it, but you got an assistant treasurer belonging underneath it, assistant treasurer collector, uh, collector doesn't belong in here, uh, because we voted to have the tax collector, the elected tax collector have her own amount, you know, voted $27,000 or something. So we really need to make sure that this wording is correct here. And just like the, the page before, um, tax collector says expense, we need a payroll line on that one to say payroll, we look for the assistant or the clerk. So right now, tax collector on my sheet says expense with no payroll, but we need some payroll numbers in there. And I think that's what that 6386 probably belongs in the tax collectors' section, and the treasurer's section would be payroll, uh, 25,772. On the record, uh, Finance Committee?
Sylvia, I think we're going by the word of the numbers. The motor, that is for guidance purposes where they were looking to move after two ladies working together. The assistant person, the ladies are going to share the back of the board. It's intuitive to share.
Ms. Moderator?
This thing, this is the word, we go off the word.
I think to clear confusion, what the audience has is not the warrant. You have a tacitly of the warrant with some of the things, it's a guidance that they were working on. So it's not the actual warrant, there are some different changes. So the warrant only has treasurer payroll.
772, 25, 772. That's the motion. Okay, good. Anything else on that? Okay. Going on to motion 25, 772, all those in favor of that number, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Assistant treasurer collector.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes?
I would move that we fund that at $0. Okay, Mike. Okay, may I give Mike a simple explanation first? My explanation is that unfortunately, I was not able to, I added a line for the assistant tax collector, but this line is for an assistant treasurer collector. So the assistant treasurer is already included under payroll. The treasurer currently has an assistant, and she has one payroll line, it's already in there. I'm sorry that the tax collector can't give an assistant because we can't add in a line, but that's how the Finance Committee saw it, that we don't need to fund an assistant treasurer because it's already funded.
Well, I'm looking at the, um, budget FY '20, and there is under the treasurer, an assistant clerk for treasurer with no number. Under the tax collector, there's a payroll of 6418 for an assistant treasurer tax collector. So it's switched from the tax collector line to the treasurer line, it's the same thing. But it was 6418. Mr. Moderator? Permission to speak? Sorry, I just wanted to bring to your attention that on the town treasurer, on the town treasurer payroll of the 25, 772, that included the payroll for the treasurer plus their assistant. So that's not just one person. So that included the part-time, both, both positions. So if you look now, and I'm looking at the FY '20, and when you look at the collector, the assistant was for the part-time, which basically they're still going to have the shared position. They're each...
basically they're still going to have the shared position. They're each, it's going to be the same. So by cutting that out, you're basically cutting out more hours that are to be shared in the treasurer and collector office because they both have assistants. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it's both salaries were in that one line item for the treasurer. Okay?
Any other discussion on that? All right, all those in favor? Wait for the microphone. Wait for the, wait for the microphone.
Wait for the microphone.
Since I was looking at the wrong payroll, I'm not sure where we're at on the vote because we keep talking about two positions. I don't know if we voted on the town treasurer's payroll and, could you tell us what we're voting on, please?
We're voting on the sixty-three eighty-six that's listed here. This is assistant treasurer collector. And I'll ask the accountant to explain it again. Kelly, can you come up here, please, and explain it again?
So included in the twenty-five seven seventy-two, that included the salary for the treasurer, and that's the assistant treasurer's salary is all under one line item. Because of the way the Mass General laws are, if it's an elected position, it has to be listed separately. As both of those were appointed positions, they are all under one line item. So I just want to be sure that you understand that when you're taking out that, the other amount, that really should stay because it should be under the collector, it should be under the collector side instead of, so you're moving it out of the treasurer's side this year, but it should be moved to the collector side.
So the sixty-three eighty-six is in the wrong line because we thought we were going to be?
Right, exactly, yes.
But it's really the collector's assistant?
Right, exactly.
It's in the wrong line item here?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you zero it out, you're taking away the collector's assistant?
Correct. You're basically taking away the assistant basically from both of those positions.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Moderator, I'd like to amend my motion to state that it will say assistant collector at sixty-three thousand eighty-six dollars.
Six thousand?
Six thousand, yes. Three hundred eighty-six.
Remending that motion, correcting that. She's changing her motion, ending her motion. She's taking a little shortcut here to say assistant collector at six thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars instead of zeroing it out. She's correcting the type. Yes, there is a second. Okay. All right. So we're making a correction. Now that we understand what is going on. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. Now, the finance committee or somebody, the accountant, somebody who is keeping tally, needs to give us a new vote. Something you were keeping, Kelly, you were thinking about the changes.
Can I request a recess for a couple minutes so I can add it up?
We will take a eight-minute recess. Please don't go too far. All right, so we're looking for a motion on the budget as amended. Finance committee.
I move to raise and appropriate two million forty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars and transfer from WPAT the sum of seven thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars for a total of two million forty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to pay the town charges for a twelve-month period commencing July one, two thousand twenty-twenty.
Motion to raise and appropriate two million forty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars and transfer from the WPAT account seven thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars for a total of two million forty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars for general operating expenses on the amended budget fiscal year twenty-one. Any questions? Mr. Manchin?
Could I make a motion to reconsider the expenses of the Board of Selectment and reduce that number of one eighty-eight three fifty down to one seventy-six two two five? The reason being is public departments were asked to lower their expense reports, but for some reason that one went up. So basing that number on the one eighty-five five from last year, reduce that by five percent, which would give you one seventy-six two two five.
I can figure the reason why it didn't go down is because that's where our expenses, our insurances go. So that's why those numbers didn't change.
But it did go up from one eighty-five?
Yeah, because our insurance went up.
And there was no reduction possible in any other area?
No. Our utilities go in there, Comcast goes in there, fuel goes in there, insurance on our property goes in there, legal costs goes in there. That's why.
Yeah, that's your answer. Thank you.
That's why it's where it is. Mr. Allen?
We took an eight-minute break here. I thought we were up on the treasurer collective payroll to change that on this two million thing. How did we get from one thing to the other?
We had gone through all the regional numbers. There were no complaints on anything further down. There was a whole, last poll was on the treasurer collector. So now we're voting on the grand total, which was, he took the break to figure out. That's the grand total.
Said that.
Okay, sorry. So we're voting on the grand total. Any other questions on the grand total of two million forty-eight thousand seven seventy-six? Eighty-nine all those in favor of the amended budget, two million forty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars, say aye. Aye. Those say nay?
Nay.
Majority passes. Thank you. Article nine, ambulance upgrade budget.
I move the article as printed, deleting or acting relation into.
Article nine has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that article? Don't see any hands up. All those in favor of article nine, say aye. Aye. Those say nay. Article nine passes. Article ten, Narragansett Regional School Budget.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million six hundred forty-six thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars to pay a share of Narragansett Regional School District budget for FY '21.
Been moved and seconded to raise and appropriate one million six hundred forty-six thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars, Narragansett Regional School District budget for FY '21.
Ms. Moderator? While it is that this finance committee unionists that did not recommend, I am, want to make clear that when I looked at the figures, for a second time around, I don't think we had it at the time, and we feel that we, you know, are paying too much, which we are, rather than request a lower amount, I'm going with a regular motion. And I just want to point out that even though it's forty-four thousand four hundred and six dollars higher than last year's total, out of that forty-four thousand, forty-one thousand six hundred fifty-three is the required minimum contribution set by the state. The state very graciously only rose Templeton's minimum contribution by point eight-four percent and raised hours three point four-four percent. So the bulk of it is in the minimum contribution. I'd say thank you very much to the state for raising hours, the higher percentage, not equal percentage.
Is the finance committee changing their recommendation, or is that just your personal?
That's my personal recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this? Can I have your name?
James Boswell, One Ten State Road. Increase in our contribution after we close the school. Next year, we're going to have less students in the district while Templeton increases the amount of students they have in the district. Their contribution isn't as much as going up the same amount of ours. So can I make a motion, or do we got to discuss this one first? How does that work?
We could amend the motion.
Right. So, Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Article ten to read the same text, changing the one million six hundred forty-six two hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars to one million even.
Been moved and seconded to amend the motion to read one million even for Phillipson's share of the Narragansett Regional School District budget for FY '21. The discussion now is on the amended motion. Here, did you want to speak to the amended motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I want to say that I handed out this sheet here, which was provided to us by the Narragansett Regional School District on March fourth of this year. And they have stuck to their numbers even upon closing our elementary school. This thing here shows, I have done the numbers on my own page, that they have reduced the personnel by eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. They also, with the additional numbers, the FY '20 budget was nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars. So they have saved at least five-hundred-thousand dollars by closing that school, at least. On top of that, Templeton for the last twenty years has decided not to pay its fair share of the per pupil that it had agreed to when it signed the regional agreement. The state came out in about nineteen ninety-seven or so and said, "Templeton, you're poorer than Phillipson, so you don't have to pay as much if you don't want to." And Templeton said, "Yay, well, that's what we'll do. We're not going to pay that." When Janice Howard and I worked on this in about two thousand and four, we discovered that Hamilton was stiffing Phillipson to the tune of three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Lately, in the last couple of years, it's down to two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-something-thousand dollars per year that they're not paying on a per pupil basis. Over twenty years, at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, that's five million dollars, Templeton has stiffed us by not paying their per pupil fair share according to the school. So I'm quite, I'm quite agreeable to the fact that we should only be paying one million dollars even because, first of all, we lost our school. Why should we, essentially what they want us to do is by keeping the numbers up at one million six hundred thousand plus dollars is we are essentially going to subsidize Templeton for their school, which our town has voted multiple times not to do. So by us voting this higher number is ridiculous. They're just, the school district is just using us as a wallet, and they don't care what we think about anything. And because we're the smaller town, they expect us to roll over and give them everything they want every time. And it's ridiculous. By them, by us reducing the budget by six hundred and forty-six thousand is still not enough, in my opinion, because, first of all, by closing the school, they're saving up, according to their figures, nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, plus Templeton's share puts us over a million dollars, one-twenty-one million dollars that we shouldn't have to pay because of this. But at a million dollars, we're only going down six hundred and forty-six thousand, it's a change. So please think about this, that we are royally getting stiffed by the school district because they don't care about us. They expect us to pay and pay and pay. And pretty soon, we're going to have to find something else to do because we can't continue on like this. Our taxes are continuously going up far faster than Templeton's are. There are considerably more people in Templeton than there are in Phillipson. So the small amount that, not a small amount, that goes up, it's ridiculous for the taxpayers of Phillipson since we're such a small number of people paying such a larger share. So please consider this. I think one million dollars is a fair number. Thank you.
Hi there. Richard Malfoy, Ball of the Rock, Phillipson. Just having a question. Mr. Moderator, I'm sure it would be the school committee or the superintendent, but hopefully requesting one point six billion. Is there a line item or any item in there that goes directly toward the debt of that school in Templeton? The voters of this town did not vote for that school. Is there an inclusion in that one point six million dollars to help aid the town of Templeton in the reduction of that debt?
Chris Kazan, superintendent of schools. The answer to that is no. That is a Templeton debt, and no lines from Phillipson would go towards the new school.
Chris, would you like to say anything else about the budget while you have the mic?
Thank you. So let's go back in time. Last year, first off, our budget is over twenty million dollars. After we apply school choice monies to costs and grants, et cetera, it comes down to, well, at this point, nineteen-sevenths of change. Last year, we went through three ruling meetings in which we wanted and asked for, and I believe needed, nineteen-point-seven million dollars, and this was last year, on three consecutive occasions, the collector not only said no, but they lowered that amount to nineteen-five. So at that point in time, we had to make cuts mid-year. That nineteen-seven, at that moment in time, represented the current configuration we have right now, which is both Phillipson and Templeton Elementary, two elementary schools. It should not be lost in this group that the minute that vote on the third occasion failed, that this would have to be the fate. To lower that number to one million dollars, first off, would mean massive cuts, which we've already made. And the fact is that we would not be sustainable as a district. And the fact is that we would not be sustainable as a district. There, we've already made several cuts to teaching positions, as everyone knows, at this point. I would also suggest that, these are your children, that these cuts will affect. So that is what I want really ultimately to say. We can talk numbers all day. We can go back and forth about numbers. Just remember, 94% of that increase that was just talking about the minimum contribution comes from the state. That's part of the Chapter 70 formula. EQV, and of course, relative wealth. And that's what, that's how they decide what you pay each town. To cut $1,000,000, to cut $70,000 votes is going to affect your children. Because there are three positions hanging out there. You've heard these before. A 10 special needs teacher at the elementary, a school psychologist at the elementary, and behavioral specialist at the elementary. 90 somewhat percent of the kids from Phillipston will be elementary. That's all I really can say. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is the Superintendent of Schools a Phillipston resident? And if not, why is he in the room? Why is he allowed to speak?
I'm giving him permission to speak to address the meeting.
Or is it a town vote, sir?
No, the moderator is allowed to, to allow him to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Sarah Leonard, Lincoln Road. I'm wondering, Mr. Moderator, how we will have social distance if Phillipston Memorial Elementary School closed, as is the plan? And I'm also wondering if the MSBA knows about the planned closing and the plan to send 5th graders to the middle school?
Chris Kastner, Superintendent. The answers to those questions are yes. The MSBA does in fact know our plan. We've been in communication with them. They require another detailed explanation of sorts, as they did last year. They are fully aware of the plan and are of the end of the intentions.
Tim Haley. If they're aware of the plans to close it, if next year we decide to reopen it back up, are they fully in agreement with allowing it to be reopened? Or will we have to do lots and lots of stuff to reopen it?
The school has not been formally closed. It really hasn't. There are technicalities to that. Many folks in this room know that. And thus, the School Committee nor the Superintendent has the authority to close the school. Certainly, you know, we would have to notify folks that we would no longer be using it, or we may no other purpose. But in order to close the school, we would have to formally inform the Select Board. I think there was another question about the MSBA. The MSBA never asked specifically about Phillipston. I think that was the other part of the question. I don't know if there was, were they aware? Is that what you said? Were they aware of us closing the school? Okay, I can't. They know what the plan was, but we never, we had never used the word "close."
I think the question, Chris, before you give up the mic, I think the other part of the question was, would it take a lot of work to reopen the school?
If this building was closed, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, if the building was closed as a school, then to reopen as a school, you would have to bring up the code.
I saw you sat, but I thought there was a hand up over here.
James Muzzle, State Road. To speak to Dr. Kastner's point of last year, they wanted, the School Committee wanted $19.7 million, and that was to keep both elementary schools open. This year, we need over $20 million, and we're going to close an elementary school. So we need $300,000 more dollars and one less school. It doesn't really seem like it makes sense.
Sarah Leonard, Lincoln Road. My question wasn't answered. How will we social distance with the elementary school closed?
I'm sorry, I did forget to answer that. The answer is, these decisions were made pre-COVID, quite frankly, in terms of the budget. The difficulty will be daunting in any capacity, quite frankly, given what the state has laid out in terms of its guidance. I really can't speak to that yet. We just received the guidance last week. So more to come on that. I really don't have an answer. But it's not a matter of space. It's a matter of, quite frankly, teachers and what configuration we will be in at any given time, given that we have to create three plans.
Chris, why don't you come up here? We're letting Eric move around folks. But come up here at this mic. Try and save a little time.
Okay, I want to say that, Chris Kastner keeps talking about the budget that last year was voted 19.5. Well, Phillipston voted exactly what the school presented them last year. It was Templeton that decided to vote the lower number. So if he keeps saying that, oh, we didn't come to the terms on the numbers that they presented, well, that's not true. Phillipston did their share. Templeton is the one that cut the budget down. So it's not fair to say, oh, Templeton, Phillipston didn't come to agree. That is technically true, but it's not really true because Phillipston did give them what they want. The other part of that is that, like Mr. Muzzle said, they've closed this school. How can they want more money out of us? So obviously, we are paying for a share of that school that Templeton now doesn't want to have to pay because they want to go more of their money into coming, their loan for the school. So yes, in assets, we are subsidizing Templeton and their share for that school. It doesn't matter what these people say because they want their money. Second of all, the school always puts out the highest numbers that they can try to get first. And then they say, oh, you didn't come to agree on the budget. Well, that's true. But they always come up with the highest numbers, knowing full well that they can survive on less numbers because that's what they're expecting. Templeton usually votes a lower number. I think this year, Phillipston should do so because our school was closed. We don't have our school anymore, and they are saving lots and lots of money by doing so. Yet we don't see that in our budget at all. And there's something really wrong with that. So I agree that it may hurt the school some, but I'm quite sure that there's plenty of that in that budget. Like Chris Kastner has said, most of the money comes from the state, $20 million something dollars. There's plenty of room in there that they can adjust, $600,000. Thank you.
My question's going to be simple. When I look at this sheet, FY21, Phillipston Memorial cost, I don't see a line item for heat. Is it going to be heated? That's electric and ground stations, and this is another thing. But it doesn't show anything in reference to the heat. And I would hope that they keep maybe 50 degrees or something in here, and I don't have to worry about things deteriorating.
I don't know why, but it's not, it's not any mistake. I'd have to get the whole budget. I'm sure there's no reason to pay, pardon me. There's no reason to pay for electric, whatever the other costs are, utilities, not pay for heat. That's, I don't disagree, it's not here, but I'm.
Last year, Narragansett School District passed over $1,750,000. I'm going to drop the round number. And we gladly paid $1,657 in Article 11. And then we were told we needed a $93,000 override, which we passed thinking, I believe, most of the people that probably voted for that was going to save this school. And then Templeton did the right thing in November. They managed to bring the budget down to $1,600,000. So basically, we overpaid $55,000 on Article 11, and we passed an override that the taxpayers of Phillipston stuck with as long as you live in town. We pay every year forever. So that's $148,000 we overpaid the school district. And according to our ledger right now, Narragansett School District only used $1,210,000 of the $1,750, the million and three quarters, which is wrong on our ledger, which is unfathomable. So that number comes out to $539,000 unused. So if you add that to the $148 we never used, we got more than, it should probably be at less than $1,000,000. But I'll go with Jim's number, James's number of $1,000,000. And if people don't see that, I don't know what else to say.
I'm Kelly Pompion, the Town Accountant for Phillipston. I'm also the Town Accountant for Templeton. And I just want to make sure that everyone here knows that the debt on the elementary school is a debt for Templeton. The school district has nothing to do with paying for that. Your assessment goes nothing toward that debt. That is a 100% debt paid by the town of Templeton out of the taxpayer dollars there. So I just want to make sure, because there's been questions about that. I just wanted to clarify that, to make sure that you do understand your tax dollars, nothing that you pay goes toward this school district or to the new elementary school.
Hi, Chris Sawyer. When Dave talked about the override, I think all these town people understood that that override would go for the school last year, I thought after Templeton, and I think most of the town people here, realized if Templeton voted it down, that that would be dead article. Our override would also die. If they failed, we failed. But we voted for it. And I hear now, over the past few months, I guess they still took the money from us, the two and a half override, $93,053. For what, I'd like to know how that happened, who's responsible, so we know who to vote out next year. But if we vote for it with a Templeton and a regional district, and if one district votes it down, it should be down. It shouldn't be slid under the rug into the budget somewhere to be used for whatever you want. We were voting, the townspeople here, for a school. Now they're closing our school. I don't know who did it. I don't know how it happened. But an override for school is an override for a school. And if it got voted down in one town, maybe legal counsel can answer this. How can our town keep the money and use it later? Probably a surplus sitting somewhere, $148,000 between the override and the overpay.
Okay, once the override passes at your town meeting and it passes at the ballot vote, it is set. There's, we have to report that to the DOR. There's nothing we can do to change that. Does it matter what Templeton does and what they vote? Okay, so that's number one. When you voted the article for the override, which was the $93,000, and I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember right off the top of my head what the vote was for the Narragansett School. Okay, the full $93,000, whenever you had an override, the full amount is the very first paid off the top. So the very first payment that was made in July that went to Narragansett School District was the override. Okay, at the end of the year, the money that's left in that account will now flow through to the town's free cash. So that will be included in your free cash. That $148,000 will be in your free cash for fiscal '21, and you will be able to vote to have that used in any way you would like. So, and you will continue to have that override. It doesn't go away unless the town chooses to put in for an underwrite, and then it has to pass at the ballot vote. But just because you have that override doesn't mean that you need to raise all of that. So let's say we decided we wanted to cut $100,000 out of the appropriations of the budget. Well, it should sit there, and you don't raise it, and you don't add that to your taxes. So there's a whole formulation that happens that, but once, I wanted to make sure you understand, that once you voted override in the town meeting and you voted at the ballot, you can't change it. It doesn't matter what another town does. It doesn't, you know, it's set. It can't be changed. So I hope that clarified that question.
Just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So of the requested 1.6 billion, portion of that will be for the high school kids, middle school kids, and Phillipston Memorial School. And that is based on keeping the school open. There's been no decision to close the school at this time.
So I want to make sure I'm clear. No one has, in the School Committee, has petitioned or for myself, petitioned to close the school. I just want to make sure that we're clear about that. I am relocating and have relocated the staff and the students up to Templeton Elementary School and to the middle school in order for me to meet the number, budget that we have been talking about in the last couple of years. So I just want to make sure that there's no discommunication in terms of that.
Okay, I understand that nobody's petitioned you, meaning that nobody has requested you as the Superintendent to close the school. Has there been discussion about closing the school?
Not with me.
How are you? What do you have on?
Wait, 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 sir. Do you want to run this meeting?
I do.
Why do you have to?
I have not.
Officer!
I want to answer questions.
Officer, come over here, please. Run this meeting, sir. Go sit down. Sir, I'm telling you, wants to sit down.
My question is, if Templeton would like that $600,000 extra, vote to pay the same as us, and they will get it.
Otherwise, don't get. Get the million to be happy. Try with what you can.
I just wanna make sure we're clear about this million dollars. The, well, the fact of the matter is that the minimum contribution is 1.2. The state sets that. Okay, first part. Transportation alone, you have to pay transportation. Have to do that as well. So I don't, I certainly don't, and this is your meeting, I just wanna simply say that voting a number that's actually gonna be lower than what's actually required by the state to pay, I just feel obligated to let you know that that's a number that won't, can't be supported by the MGL. You have to pay a certain amount, right? I mean, additional appropriation, I mean, served right up, right? Additional appropriation to us, to decide. You're already, the transportation is down. And, well, then you have the minimum contribution. So, the number that you've, that you're bantering back and forth about, I don't wanna use the word legal, or any search, but I don't believe that it hits the master of law, given the fact that your 1.2 million is the minimum contribution that the state says you have to pay.
This will be better. Last year, we had three district-wide meetings, and at the last meeting, I think, we lost the vote by two or three. If a few more people had been there, we would've kept that budget. So again, voters can vote anything they want, but if you vote a million dollars, I hope to see you all at every single district-wide meeting, because it's gonna take a lot more people than when last year. A lot of people that came to the voter select meetings every week to talk about the school, many of them did not go to any district-wide meetings. So just keep that in mind.
Sir, could I make a motion to move the amendment?
Move and second it to move the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question is moved. All those in favor? You want a paper ballot? Got a second on that motion? A motion? There is a motion and a second for a paper ballot on the amended motion. All those in favor of a paper ballot? All those in favor of a paper ballot on the amended motion? All those in favor of a paper ballot on the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, there goes. All those in favor of the amended motion of substituting 1 million dollars for Narragansett Regional School Budget, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No.
People do a standing count on that, please. All those in favor? All those in favor of the amended budget, 1 million dollars for Narragansett Regional School District, please stand and remain standing until I turn you to sit down. Please be seated. All those opposed to the amended budget of 1 million dollars, please stand and remain standing until I turn you to sit down. Please be seated. Okay, the motion carries 28 to 18. So we go straight then to the vote on the main motion. Main motion is raise and appropriate the sum of 1 million dollars for Narragansett Regional School District budget for fiscal year '21. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. Pass my majority vote at 8:47. Article 11.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 204,650 dollars to pay a share of the Montezet Regional Locational Technical School Budget for fiscal year '21.
Moved and seconded and raised 204,650 dollars to pay our share of the Montezet Regional Location Technical School Budget for fiscal year '21. Is there any discussion on this, sir? Mr. Mayor. Does anybody here know any cost savings that could've occurred for closing the school early because of the COVID-19? And if there was any cost savings, could this be taken out of this particular budget they're asking for? Thank you. Mr. Olson.
Good evening, everybody. This is Matt Harrowson, AT Ball, Willmore Road. Do want to make a mention that administration from Monty Tech, actually, I asked them not to come this evening because of the notification of having no outside visitors. So I could have somebody probably provide a much better detailed number, but I am the Chair of the Financial Planning Subcommittee from Monty Tech, and I'm your representative from Phillips and. So yes, there is some savings that we're now putting into our updated budget. This number that's in our warrant is our '21 budget that we had passed before anything happened with COVID-19. So we are currently looking at restructuring our budget, and having updated numbers, once we get Chapter 70 numbers and updates from the state. So we expect that there'll be changes to our assessment. We're still hopeful as a committee to vote our full budget as approved, with the expectation that those assessment numbers will always be the maximum number that will come back to the communities. But it gives us a number to work from without going back to all 18 cities and towns to revote our budget. So it's quite a lengthy process for us. We don't have updated numbers yet of where we expect to be with the state numbers, of how we're rolling savings. There is some savings we could see in this year. We have pre-purchased materials for next year in anticipation of production. We've also taken some pretty drastic measures for staff notifications of not reemployment, just not knowing where we're going to be with our funding. So we've taken some pretty, pretty strong positions to be prepared for getting not good numbers from the state in the near future. Thanks.
Any other questions about the Monty Tech budget? Seeing none, all those in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 12 as printed, deleting or acting relation thereto.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 12?
Yes, I would just say that the 1511 is what they were making as of, you know, this year. So there was no legal reason that in that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article 12, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. Article 13.
I move Article 13 as printed, deleting or acting relation thereto. Nope, just saying nay.
Any further discussion on Article 13? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Article 13, say nay. Article 13, passage unanimously. Article 14.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 5,000 dollars to be used for repairs and maintenance at Phillips Memorial School, including all incidental and related expenses, to be expanded at the direction of the Select Board.
Moving seconded and raised 5,000 dollars for repairs and maintenance at Phillips Memorial School. Any discussion?
I'm on the Phillips Memorial School, whatever committee, building committee, I guess would be the best name for it. And there's a feeling personally, and I recommended this, that for now, until there's some direction in terms of the building, not to take the taxpayers' money and just let it sit there. So the decision was to drop it down to 5,000. If something happened that we needed more money in terms of maintenance, then there's always a special town meeting, or money from the reserves, and we can cover it. But rather than tax the folks, we dropped it down 15,000.
Okay. Any other discussion? See, sorry, Sylvia has a question.
I don't know if it's the accountant that could answer this, but I think that we have, without last year's information, there was an article that we voted maybe 10,000 last year. Whatever the amount was, does that stay, or does that have to go into the free cash? So that, she's nodding, it's going into the free cash. So that means that, did you say 15,000 for that amount, or 5,000? I heard 5,000. It's hard to hear properly with the numbers.
This is 5,000.
5,000. Okay. So just so everybody understands that this is gonna be the amount, 5,000. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this question? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amount 5,000 for the elementary school maintenance fund? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. Article 15.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 10,000 dollars to be used for general repairs and maintenance on any town-owned buildings, including all incidental and related expenses, to be expanded at the discretion of the Select Board.
As it was said a couple times tonight, we're heading into some tough times, even the spoken coming back, that right now, they're wondering where their money's gonna come from, or maybe it'll be there. But usually, when somebody, with their home, folks usually go, oh, tough times, they cut my hours back, my wife got laid off. Whatever the situation, you pull in the wagons and you make do. You go up on the roof and you buy some of that material you see on TV and you fix the leak. We, from the Finance Committee, felt that any of these repairs should be put off. The 40,000 is taxing the people too much, especially when things are getting tight. You all know what it's like being, having, being financially deficient, and it was felt by the, again, by the Finance Committee. If there's something that's really bad and really needs to be done, then maybe there should be a special town meeting and let the folks decide what to do, whether to fix it, et cetera, et cetera, or maybe come up with a lower number. So we, as a Finance Committee, are recommending that the 40,000 be dropped to 10, we're saving 30. And, like I said, now it's more our time in our history that we should be extremely transparent in terms of how money is spent. And it should go to the people. The folks should decide. You wanna spend the 40, that's, it's up to you.
Hi there, Andrew Flynn, 135 Blaine Corner Road. So one question is, the KIMCOM originally recommended the approval of this 40,000 amount. I'm curious what changed between the original recommendation and now? And there are some other repairs that I was informed about, the library, perhaps the upstairs of the town hall renovations. Will those be seen to, quite frankly?
Well, you wanna redo the upstairs, fine, but it's not the time to do it. We'll have to make do with what's up there. Library's gonna have to make do. Make do up until this year, go one more year. Like I said, if there's an issue and it becomes a dire emergency, then we'll go for it. Maybe whatever we're thinking of doing with upstairs, we can get some kind of a matching grant figured. But like I said, it's time to be extremely transparent with the townsfolk. It's time for the townsfolk to start making decisions on things, rather than just, oh, yeah, 40,000, and then drive by one of the buildings and find that there's a new picture window. Whoa, wait, I didn't think for that. So, you know, Finance Committee is trying to say- So, you know, Finance Committee is trying to save some money. I can honestly say personally that within the last week or so, a lot of figures would change. And personally, I might not have voted in favor of supporting something, but then again, you know, I'm, that's me. Maybe the team would think differently, but saving the town, what? $30,000.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move the question.
Okay, move and seconded to the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of the question at $10,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes by majority. Article 16, prior year bills. Requires a... What is the vote? What is the vote? So we need to know what's going to count.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,242.61 to pay the bills as printed in the article.
Move and seconded to raise $3,242.61 to pay some prior year bills. Discussion? Okay, this is a standing count. All those in favor of paying these bills, please stand or remain standing until we finish the count. See you. Any opposed, please stand. Article 17, Community Preservation Fund Distribution.
I move Article 17 as printed, deleting or acting relation there too.
Thank you. There's Donna. Thank you. Move to the second, Article 17. Don, would you give the report of the community preservation, please?
With the town meeting distributing the funds as follows. $12.5 for the store resources reserved, $12.5 for the community housing reserve, $12.5 for open space, $87,000 for the budget reserved, and $500 for the committee administrative expense.
Committee of the... Committee of the Committee of the Committee of the District Report, and the distributions are as printed in the report. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 17 as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article 18, Capital Investment Fund Allocation.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000 to the capital investment fund.
Moved and seconded to transfer $150,000 from free cash to the capital investment fund. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passage unanimously. Article 19.
I move Article 19 as printed, deleting or acting relation there too.
Thank you. Article 19 to make the final payment on the brush drop. Any discussion? Requires two-thirds, so we will have to stand again. Any discussion? All those in favor, please stand, remain standing while we count. Please proceed. Anyone opposed, please stand. See unanimously. Article 20, Stabilization Fund.
I move the town transfer from free cash the sum of $65,723 to the stabilization fund.
Move and seconded to transfer $65,723 to the stabilization fund. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article 21. Looking for a report from the Planning Board. I missed two, so first I need a motion.
I move this Article 21 as printed, deleting or acting relation there too.
Move the sec, Article 21's move and seconded, report from the Planning Board, please. Mr. Callexia.
This article is to allow for a temporary moratorium on the sighting of marijuana establishments. The reason, the reason being, the first amendments zoning bylaws that we made didn't take into account the number of licenses, and like, some were for testing, some were for growth, some were for retail, and the focus was mainly on retail. And some of the town folks wanted some, a chance to put in some input and the Planning Board to look into this more, just to better define the bylaw. Yes, and the Planning Board did recommend this article.
Any further discussion on the article? I'm sorry, Mr. Buzzell.
James Buzzell State Road. Would this in any way affect the current proposal that's in the works down by Baldwin Hill Road? Would this stop what's in the works now? Don't we already have a host community agreement?
Mr. Moderator, response to a question. It certainly is possible, I'm not quite sure where he is in the process, but essentially what this does is that it would impose, assuming that the Attorney General's Office approves this article effective when town meeting voted is when the moratorium would go into effect, so unless the applicant has a pending special permit application before his only court of planning, or whether the special permit rating authority is, then yes, it would. If there's something that's already pending now, then enacting this moratorium after the fact of not affecting pending application.
Worston Farm, David Schmidt, just came for a site plan today at the town folks' office that was clocked in at 1:10, and all the plans are there. I notified the Planning Board, and he has, David Schmidt has a time stamp to see.
What this application for is just a retail. I mean, he had talked about other things, but he's through all that, and it's just for a retail location. And he has to have stuff left. I believe he's sending some stuff to CCC. It's hard to tell.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor of, sorry, way back there, Mr. Tenny.
There was an article in the paper last week that he was going to originally try to have a growing facility and a retail facility, but to do with the, something to do with the zoning bylaws, and he could not get an amendment, he decided to just have a retail.
He also told the Select Board that there were wetlands on the property, and his wetland site is found, and would make it very difficult for it to put the growing facility up there. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of Article 21? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Two-thirds? Okay. Standing count, please. All those in favor, please rise, and remain standing while we count. Please proceed. All those opposed, please stand. Sorry, the article passes 26 to 13. Right on the notes. Article 22.
I move Article 22 as printed, deleting or acting relation there too.
Moved and seconded. Looking for a report from the Planning Board, please.
Well, as it says in the article here, currently we have three approved large-scale installations that are completed or under construction, and this would, it's again, a temporary moratorium, so that the town could plan, if you look at the last, the last paragraph on that, it gives the town a little more time to look at planning and the use of the lands and... I believe there was another site that was going to be on the Phillipsden line, and they just wanted some time to look at the impact of such things. Yes, this was recommended by the Planning Board.
Any other questions or comments on this article?
Yes, the article for example, I'm just a little concerned that it seems like we're trying to stop...
Laurie, can you hold the mic right up to your mouth, please?
Okay. I'm just a little concerned that we seem to be trying to stop people from finding ways to actually make some money from their properties. I guess the state property puts certain moratoriums on how many solar facilities can go in within a certain time, you know, within a certain year, and I just, I just think this is like overkill and kind of targeted people, but I'm trying to find some way of not, you know, losing the properties by turning it into an income producing. Is there anyone else to say on it?
Anyone else have anything to say on this article? David.
Actually, I don't know why we are trying to stop solar companies from doing this, because we do get revenue every year, we earn revenue for at least 20 years, or however the channels are good. We sign a contract with them and bring some money into the town every year. So I would be against this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there one? All those in favor of this article, this is going to require two-thirds votes, so we'll do an understanding count. All those in favor of this article, please stand or remain standing while we count. All those opposed, please stand or remain standing while we count. Article fails 26 to 23. Please proceed. Okay, last article, Article 23.
I move pass over Article 23.
Move and seconded to pass over Article 23. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator. Since this article was actually written based on the fact that the tax collector might become an appointed position, the Finance Committee felt it was no longer relevant, and so that's why we asked to pass it.
Any discussion from the floor? Pass over the article, all those in favor passing over the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Article is passed over. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, I'd like to revisit Article 10 and amend that $1 million to be 1646239. Original figure. Yes, please. Can I speak on that reconsider? Please.
When I reconsider the article, we have to have a second, and then we have to have a two-thirds vote to reconsider, and then you can speak. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reconsider Article 10. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 10, stand and remain standing while we count. You don't have two-thirds. I can see that right here, you don't have two-thirds. You don't have two-thirds. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting. adjourned, seated DA. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.